Okay, I'd like to bring to order the council meeting for May fifteenth. Can we start with the pledge of the flag?
The pledge of the flag is that we are United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When you have the roll call, please. Here, okay. Let's see. Going over. We have a few presentations. Normally, Gino gets to, is he still here or did he leave? Oh, yeah, yeah. You normally wait till the last item, but we put you first on the agenda because of all the things we've put you through.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, come on up.
You mean after forty-seven years of the flag they burst when the agenda?
Exactly. All right. So, this is everybody, I think everybody knows Gino. All right? So, Gino is the face of Recology and has been the face of other of the hall of that have been here in Atherton going on forty-seven years. And I hear he might be wanting to say forty-eight, I don't know. Okay. But whereas he has served for forty-seven dedicated years in the recycling and solid waste industry, and whereas Gino has been instrumental in helping town staff respond to citizen concerns about refuge and recycling rates and other associated matters, and he's been assisting town staff in setting up and coordinating the ever-popular e-waste shred and compost giveaway events that we have annually. And whereas Gino's first sixteen years in the recycling and solid waste industry, he worked on a truck doing residential pickups throughout Burlingame to East Palo Alto. And whereas in nineteen eighty-nine, correct me if any of this will fall off.
So far, you're so good, though. That's why you're there.
Gino was part of the rollout team that initiated the voluntary curbside recycling here in San Mateo County. And at that time, it was the largest multi-jurisdictional residential recycling program in the nation. Very impressive. And whereas in two thousand four, he joined the recology team and helped secure the next level of service for us if we're a part of that today, which now serves four hundred and thirty-five thousand residents in San Mateo County, the southern part of San Mateo County, and a hundred and ten thousand commercial clients. And whereas the city council and the town of Atherton would like to recognize Gino for his dedication to the town of Atherton, for his outstanding contributions to the county of San Mateo and the world, and therefore, as mayor of Atherton, on behalf of the city council, I recommend, commend you for your outstanding service and appreciate everything you've done for us over these last forty-seven years.
Thank you.
And we wish you to put on a forty-eighth or fifth.
Well, you never know. Thank you very much. Thank you. Again, seems like yesterday, as Bill mentioned, I was on the trucks. And actually, one of my routes was Atherton. I remember, I remember the long driveways. Again, it wasn't curbside service like it is now. So, I do remember lots of long driveways. I remember many, many dogs. Where you all used to hide the underground cans, remember some of you had them?
They still have some.
Yes, they still have some of those. So, I do remember all that. It's always been a pleasure working in this industry and working for the town of Atherton, and especially for you and your current councilman. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Then we have a certificate of recognition. Is Luca here? All right, come on up. Come on up. Okay, so Luca participated in the SBWMA art program, and kids from all over the southern part of the county participated and submitted ideas. And we are so fortunate to have had somebody, when this is the first time in Atherton, somebody who's actually won an award. He took third place. And your picture is up here. Did you want to talk about it a little bit? Okay, well, you know, so anyway, congratulations on taking third place in the trash-to-art contest and by creating your unique art piece, DJ Trash Go. So, we have a certificate for you, and we do appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Mom, for bringing you here tonight. Okay, good. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're a member, you go to Los Lomitas School, right? Right, Los Lomitas School District. All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, buddy. You did a good job.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Another moment we've all been waiting for. Public comments. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment about an item that is not on the agenda? No public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comments. We had a closed session meeting, so the city attorney will report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city councilmen in closed session. Two items. First, public employee performance evaluation. The city manager and the council discussed and took no action. The second item, a conference with labor negotiator and the HUC negotiator George Roderick. City manager discussed issues with the city council. Again, the council gave direction to the city manager with respect to negotiations.
Okay. All right. City managers report, item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here to report to you this evening, staff is here to answer any questions you might have. With respect to the Civic Center project, it was a very exciting day. We dropped the first set of three trailers into the park. They were supposed to be here between six and six-thirty this morning. Unfortunately, they sent us some messages and weren't going to be here until ten or ten-thirty this morning. And then they actually showed up about, what time, Marty?
Eleven forty-five.
Eleven forty-five. Right about the time that Knox Place School was doing their transition for kids back and forth. So, that made it even more exciting. So, we had, we brought them in the main entryway, and then they had to go through the circular driveway around in order to get to their spot to go. So, they at least cleared the path, so to speak, for the next sets of trailers that are going to be coming in next week. But then we're having to answer any other questions, councilman.
How many, how many trailers?
A total of six.
Well, three today.
Three today.
Three today, yes.
And that's going to house?
Permit center.
Yeah, the permit center, so building, planning, admin, finance, et cetera. But the three today are for building.
And all the electrical and everything else that?
It's, we're being worked on right now.
In progress. We don't actually move in until the end of the month.
Right.
Okay. We've got a couple more.
All right.
Any other questions for George?
So, your report included a section on the twenty-eight, rule twenty-eight funds. And you noted that the PUC made this unexpected decision regarding the city of Live Oak. And you had some advice for us, but my question was, does that decision by the PUC use up all of the funds for all of the unused work credits among cities in California? Or?
No. No, it's allocated out to the different agencies. We only lost seven thousand of our one-point, something like?
So, one of the options was to create an undergrounding district ordinance that would expire at some point. And we've contemplated doing this along Farrots Lane. If we were to pass an ordinance establishing that district?
Would that save our seven thousand?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure it's worth it, but.
Right. I don't know. Robert, what's your take on that?
If we had gone through the process to do that, it would, being that we would have had an active district, it would take us off the inactive list, and we would not lose money. But there is a process to do that, and at this point, it's a little longer than ninety days, and so we'll likely lose that money.
Will this reoccur? I mean, if you just like, if you're going to lose, you're going to start losing if you don't use it, or create these?
I was going to say, this is the first time I've seen them act this way. But I think that they've started a process in which they are looking at the use of rule twenty, rule twenty-eight funds. And it is likely that the program is, as they go through their process over the next year or two, they are likely going to change the rule twenty-eight program in different ways. And so, we have the opportunity to either create a district, or, as written in the report, we can look at exchanging those credits with another agency that might be more active in utilizing them.
So, we talked about that.
Yeah.
They're going to get some small percentage of the funds.
Thirty percent or something?
Somewhere between thirty and fifty percent, depending on the market.
But if, if, if we made a district, and then we said, well, we want to do this project, would they consider, do you believe that, given what they're doing for Live Oak, that we would get other people's things without having to buy them, their funds, without having to buy them, to cover our additional costs?
In what I read about the Live Oak, it was an extenuating circumstance in which they were utilizing not just the funds that they had, they borrowed forward, they tried to acquire, and in essence, they are going beyond the five-year limit, which is the typical borrow. And to fund that, the PUC is taking little bits and pieces from agencies that are not active in utilizing their credits.
But that's exactly Bill's question. If we were to do the same, the reason we didn't go forward and establish that district, we looked at the possibility of putting the lines underground from the train tracks up to the end of our parcel on Farrots, was because we didn't have quite enough funds to do it, including the five-year borrow ahead. But if we were to establish it and seek to get that money, is that the last question?
Well, I think, as Robert mentioned, that's, this is the first time in all of our experience with rule twenty-eight funds and underground districts, that we've seen this actually occur. It's something maybe we should ask AG and AP, is that if we were to establish a district, were to borrow ahead five years and still couldn't, couldn't make the cost of that district work, what are options given by?
That would be a good idea for staff to look at.
I'm still, I hate to say, a little confused about it. I mean, they just arbitrarily said, well, since you haven't been active, we're going to take a little, we're going to take some of your money away. I mean, but isn't that our money? How can they legally do that, councilman?
It's PG and E money. They've been ordered over the years, the twenty-eight programs. They put money into an account for us to underground.
Oh.
Because PG and E's money.
So, it's really not our?
allocation to Atherton.
Those are allegations of us.
It's PG and E's money.
I think we should act pretty quickly.
I think that we have to be careful about the ground act here, because it's not on the agenda, as you said, the city manager's report. So, if we want to talk about doing something, we're going to have to put it on the agenda.
We'll investigate.
Could you do that a little bit more?
Any other questions for?
I do want, I think this is an appropriate time, I don't know where else it would be, but would love to get an update on the West Bay sanitary, the lanes and equipment on El Camino, that particular project. Yeah, because that's handled very, very poorly.
Really?
Very.
Oh, my goodness. Terrible.
Do you know anything about that project, Robert? I know David's familiar with it.
David's familiar with it. I mean, West Bay's replacing the sewer main on El Camino. The permit is under Caltrans for working on El Camino. There are some impacts that have happened on our local streets, including some damage that we're going to be seeking that they repair.
Just the lack of notification, and, you know, poorly handled all the way around, and they need coordination. We forgot a way to get coordination better.
Yeah, unfortunately, the state is not the best at coordinating with local jurisdictions in terms of the permit activities that they authorize.
What would you recommend that the residents who have been impacted contact the head of the West Bay sanitation district, who's Fran Dean?
Well, it all depends on what.
Because that's who, they're the ones who contracted, didn't they?
They did.
So, I would recommend that Fran Dean, who's also the head of the Chamber of Commerce in Menlo Park, right at the train station, that people should go down there and see her.
Start to make recommendations.
Say, just one.
I hear some suggestions. I hear some rough feathers.
But we'll give the council an update on what we can find out for West Bay, from the staff.
Okay.
Oh, well. Yes.
I have one. To the mayor, I have one little comment that I should have brought to the city manager. On page, oh, page numbers. It's in the public works update. There was a before and after picture that the moon bleeds from the Bell, Maple Leaf Island. I was just wondering if the before should be, if they should be switched, because the before looks better than the after.
Great comment.
I'm just.
Comment noted.
Okay.
On the, in the minutes section of your report, there was the fire district item. And I brought up to George that I thought that the recounting of what was said at the meeting, especially some important things that were highlighted in the papers, weren't adequately identified, and we might want to have them minuteed in some manner, just that it was said and by whom, as we move forward with fire district discussions. I don't know, if you would like to have that shown.
Consent calendar, approval of minutes, item eight. For the January twenty-second minutes, there was a suggestion that we add the comments from board members alone and feedback from a couple of the council members. If we can go back and look at the record and amend the minutes before they're signed, if the council wishes to do that.
I think that's a good suggestion, because the minutes are what memorializes the meetings, although a lot of minutes are just action items, action minutes and not detail minutes, because everything's on video now. So, that definitely memorializes it.
Yeah, well, we'll pull the minutes from that approval this evening, and we'll amend them and then bring them back.
But the person who said that keeps saying he didn't say that.
Well, it'd be nice to refresh my memory.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments on items one through seven?
I have a, I have a comment on item number ten.
Okay, so you want to pull item ten or just?
I just have a question about managing PCVs and building demolitions. It seems like we've had a program for managing hazardous materials in the past, and so how is this different? How is this new? It seems, is this twenty-eighteen PCVs and priority building materials model, is that a new, this is a new darn?
Yeah, this is a new thing. Yeah. So, I think the hazardous materials programs you're referring to include like lead abatement and asbestos abatement, and those are governed by direct state regulation. And so, when somebody's demolishing a building, they test those items, and they have to have certified contractors to deal with them. As part of our regional stormwater permit, the regional board tasked all of the permities to come up with a way of managing PCVs during building demolition. And as outlined in the report, there's a certain type of construction and a certain window where buildings may have been constructed or remodeled, where items like caulking and other things used PCVs. And so, the concern is, is that during building demolition, these things become airborne and then deposit themselves on the roadways and other things and end up in the waterways. So, the San Mateo County program, along with the other programs throughout the region, worked together to develop a, you know, a format and a program, standardized worksheets, had public outreach with not just the jurisdictions on how to do it, but also with the construction industry. And so, they had several workshops for the public to participate as the program was being developed. This program is beneficially, this program is consistent with everybody in the area. So, if somebody, a demolition contractor comes to one agency versus another, they're doing the same thing.
Okay. So, I guess that was my own question, is that the ordinance and things that were going to sign here, is this more or less a template?
That's correct.
Other jurisdictions in San Mateo County, or Bay Area?
It's pretty much Bay Area wide.
So, resolution?
Reso, sorry. That's one of the things.
On the same channel, we already do monitor, and they just added, in essence, a layer of the immune of PCVs, because all of, this is just another layer of protection, and this is just another guideline to implement the building.
Yeah, so we will have to, this is a new thing for us to implement.
Okay. I'm from mine, just needed some questions.
Are there any other questions about items on the consent calendar that people wish to pull?
There's only three of them.
I know.
Motion to approve?
No, 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 we haven't asked the public.
No, sorry.
Any members of the public wish to discuss items eight through ten, which is the approval of the minutes, approval of committee bills and claims, and the resolution on PCB management that you just discussed? Seeing none, no public comments, then we have a motion to approve?
Second?
I'm sorry. As we move along, we're going to second the minutes, right?
Right.
Yes.
You want a second?
No, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, good. All right, go to item eleven. Item eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Item number eleven is, is approval for resolution governing town committees, setting a distribution of staggered terms and adjusting the treaty charter and membership detail as deemed appropriate by the council. At the, at a fire meeting, the council discussed ways to stagger the terms to various committee members. So, in this resolution, I added, for example, in twenty-nineteen, staggering one term. For this particular committee, one-twenty, you stagger two terms. That provides the mechanism to do that when you come to appointment in June for each of the respective committees. The only committee that I did not make an adjustment to, or make a suggestion for, was the Civic Center Advisory Committee. The council has had comments, conversation in the past about that the council itself is a more involved body at this point, so is there a need to actually continue the Civic Center Advisory Committee moving forward? That's pleasure of the council. You can either add staggered terms for the resolution, or disband the committee, or whatever the council chooses to do this evening. With that, staff's recommendation is you adopt the resolution as is presented. Good comments on the Civic Center Advisory Committee.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a little question. So, when you say the Civic Center Advisory Committee, does that also include the PNC Subcommittee also?
That's correct.
To disband their, that would also be disled?
Correct.
Do you have a?
So, in your proposal, you leveled out the years so that, which I think is what we asked for, to stagger them so that we would minimize the number of appointments that would have to be made in any one year. So, over a four-year period, as a five-member committee, it would be one, one, one and two. And in each case, you enable the longer term, as these terms come up, to have more people on it. So, if it was one, one, one and two, the two would be a four-year term. The only place that you didn't do that was on the rail committee. And the rail committee, we have ten people, they had no turn before, and you arranged it to be three would be one year, three would be two years, two would be three years, and two would be four years. So, you actually made the greater number shorter rather than the greater number longer. And was that intentional?
No.
Or did it sort of happen?
It sort of happened that way. I was trying to figure out how to do ten members.
Yeah, you know, that was complicated, again, for sure. Okay, sorry. That's my question.
I want to circle back to the CCAC committee, because I think one of the commitments that council originally made with the CCAC committee was that if there were going to be significant changes in the?
Change orders.
Change orders, yeah, changes, change orders in the design, that the CCAC committee would be consulted, would be done. And I'm not anticipating that, because I think that our design is pretty well set. We've got a good construction bid on it, we've got some good construction professionals, and Marty and Robert are going to be, oh, watching over everything. But in the unlikely chance, so if the committee is disbanded, then it can't be recalled.
Any change orders at that point when they come to the council?
What about the bill anyway?
Absolutely, yes. Leads to a comment rather than a question.
This is a comment, oh, oh, this is a question, that's right. Okay. So, you did the comment later.
Okay. Any other questions for George? Any public comments on this item? Seeing no public comments, we'll come back for comments from council.
So, Bill, I have a question for the attorney member, which is, am I able to proceed behind this conversation? Am I approximately?
This is a discussion.
Yeah, it's not going to change the evaluation of your property, give any respect, just talking about the committee. I think that's procedural more than subject.
First of all, I'm going to thank Rick for the suggestions, and I think you're kind of the one that put the point on this. And I actually was pretty supportive of the rail being represented on rail. That is creative as George was with as many people as I have there. So, you know, it's, and some of them have been there before I was born. But.
They have been there.
Number four.
Or like rail, rail in general. In rail in general. But I'm supportive of how we move forward. I think that related to the Civic Center Advisory Group, I'm okay with it coming back to a council perspective, my word with the council, because they'll make the decisions quicker.
Rick? Okay, so I may have a couple disagreements with Terry. First, I think we should change the composition of the rail to be two members will be appointed for one year, two members will be appointed for two years, three members will be appointed for three years, and three members will be appointed for four years. It just changes the dynamic. Instead of having three for one year and three for two, you know, it gives three people an additional year than they otherwise would have had, which they've been on there forever, so it's not going to feel like much to them, but I think that's the right structure, I think. With respect to the Civic Center Advisory Committee, I think about, I mean, these are folks that have really participated in the design for the Civic Center and spent a lot of time on it, and now haven't met for over a year. So, I guess my opinion is, if there were a big change, it would be valuable to me as a council member to hear what they would think about it, because I respect their opinions, because they spent so much time in the design. I don't frankly anticipate that's going to happen. I think the design is really good, but, you know, who knows? So, I guess my preference would be to keep them until the Civic Center is done, and then provide that that committee will be disbanded. But I don't know that they'll, that we'll need them to be, I would not bother. But I don't know that they'll, that we'll need them to be, I would not bother to give them terms.
So if I could maybe add on to what you're saying, my, my, that's kind of my sentiment, that's my gut feeling. However, there are members of the CCAC committee who have gone on to other things and are, have not been in, are, would not be really involved. The PMC group, like Steve Donstar, Rose Howe, Clive as an outside advisor, you know, they're, they're real industry professionals, and I think they, with that small group, they could be used very helpful to the Civic Center to give advice and recommendation to the council if a huge change was being made without having to convene the entire Civic Center Committee. So maybe that would be an alternative.
And we could pull them together just as an
Very quickly.
Right, I mean, we don't need, maybe just
The mayor would have to
Yeah, the mayor would pull that together.
Be able to, have to do that.
Just because I can't resist, I'm going to repeat that I think this is a staggering idea. Yeah, no, dumb joke, but anyway.
Oh, you're referring
To the staggering terms.
Every time you explain a joke, it's a good one, isn't it? Yeah. So my, I thought it was great, it's a great suggestion, it was a great suggestion, I thought it's been well implemented, to the extent there's been two issues that have kind of come up. My thought of rail committees actually would, would move the early term, front of the committee, so that the turnover would be good. I think fresh blood would be a good idea in that committee, and so that'd be
So that's different from
Yeah, that's right. And then with regards to the Civic Center Advisory Committee, I do think it's important that the council be as actively involved in it as it can, and I think there's a couple of dynamics that could come into play, one of which is that when two council members are fully, totally involved in everything, the others sometimes feel like they're not quite as involved in what's going on. So if we reach the point where it's okay for the full council here, that'd be my preference from that standpoint, and I like the idea of the interested people who've been involved for years in the committee continuing for that
The PMC group, yeah.
Yes, however, however we want to define it, still be consulted, and we can figure out a mechanism for that.
I think it's, I think it benefits us because they're good, good advice.
I'm finding both of those suggestions, which is consistent with what Kerry said, so just change.
Okay, so my two senses, first off, I like the staggering, I think it was a great observation, Rick, that you put forward. I can go either way. On the rail committee, it would be nice to get some additional people, newer people on the committee. However, I don't know if there are people waiting to get on it, so
Yeah, I don't think there's a limit to how many members there are.
Well, we've had people, yeah, I think it's 10.
We put 11 on it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's recent.
With regards to the CCAC, you know, I want to make sure, from my perspective, I think everything needs to come back at this point in time, that staff doesn't feel as, you know, needs to have our view. I think we've got a great staff that's looking at this, and that are very knowledgeable and have been working with this as well, and I think that, you know, they need to bring it back to the council. The PMC, you know, of course, there's really only Rose Howe now, you know, Clive doesn't live here, DeeDee doesn't live here, Steve, you know, I've heard that maybe he's going to move or start living in Palo Alto, and so, well, well, good, Lee may not be a resident, he may be, I don't know, but, you know, I don't see a need for this, but if we need to have people come back and look at stuff, we can always ask them to come back on an ad hoc basis. But I don't personally think that we need to continue with that committee, as was suggested by Kerry.
So my direction, rail committee, I think as it's written, so that it presents the shorter terms and advanced opportunity for turnover. With the CCAC, that one would be disbanded, so we write that out, the staff has the ability to use the PMC as we need to.
Yeah, as an ad hoc, right.
And private people.
And the people, yeah, and the people that were on the committee, we need to generate letters to them and we'll get that sent out so that they, they put in a lot of time, and they need to be recognized and thanked appropriately.
Absolutely. What does the, our approval, I must admit, I think I was chatting with the city attorney apologies, prior approval for use of the PMC?
If you feel it's something that needs to go back to the PMC, then you can come back and let us know that.
That would occur, or would be used them, or that
That you want it, that you need that.
Got it.
Council votes to approve.
Do we need a resolution to change the terms?
That you'll be adopting a resolution this evening with the qualification you just talked about.
Yeah, as soon as it goes out to public. Public comment moves out.
No, thanks.
No, are there any public comments on this item? I saw a hand go up. I know, you're actually, I just saw you.
We're serious. This is like an auction.
All right, closing public comments. We have a motion.
So we pass.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Number 12 is the RFP for the procurement assistance for the solid waste and recycling services item that we discussed a month ago.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As the mayor indicated, you spoke about this at the last council meeting, we've since crafted that RFP to release, we have a lot of free firms that we would release it to at this point, plus we could release it on the open market, the target mostly firms, for procurement assistance for solid waste and recycling services. I don't know what the cost would be, but I have a harder guess, it'd be between 30 and 50, like I mentioned before, and we would use the solid waste grid stabilization fund to pay for it. With that, staff recommends approval of the RFP and authorize approval. Questions?
I was just going to say, I just want to confirm, before when we talked, you said you did manage to take a tremendous amount of time for staff. Have you, are you still in that position, or do you have to provide some kind of
No, it's not a tremendous amount of time, but with any contract, with contract management, staff would also participate in any public meetings or public engagement opportunities with the community and interviews with any haulers or bidders on the contract, so that staff time is baked in, and it's an additional responsibility above whatever else is going on present. But I wouldn't call it significant.
Well, so the staff report says financial impacts, you know, has, it's not, nothing known at the time, but obviously the staff has spent time preparing the document that we have here.
Yes, I did.
Yes, so how much, I mean, there was money spent?
Probably about, took me about two hours to put that together.
Boy, you're correct. How did you arrive at the evaluation criteria?
I stole it from another agency, I don't remember what the name of that agency was, but they, they just all do this process, and I stole the framework and the evaluation criteria.
They did a good job.
That's why I took it to them.
I see, I see. And you feel comfortable about the weighting of qualifications and quality references?
Yeah, and again, this is just the firm that's going to help us do this work, not the haulers themselves. And if you like, I'm happy to have, you know, we have Marty who's got a lot of experience in this field, and Robert as well, help evaluate the consultants as they come through. There's really only two or three firms out there. There's HF, and HF which SBWMA has used as part of their negotiation process, there's R3, which is another one that I've used and Marty's used in the past, and then there's a third one, I think, remember the name of it, and we'll send it to all three of those, and then, of course, out on the open market.
So I think that's all my questions. I do have a com, I have comments about the weighting, because I, you know, don't
But won't we say comments, comments? Any other questions? Any public comments on this item? Closing public comments, back to comments.
So I just think that, you know, you've got the firm qualifications at a rated at 30 percent, the understanding of the project issues and expected results at 50 percent, the quality of the work plan and the quality references, both at 10 percent. It seems that the firm's qualifications really should be at least equal to the understanding of the project issues, or maybe say 45 percent, and the understanding of the project issues at 35 percent, and then the quality of the work proposed plan, you know, attended hand. I don't know, it just seems like the firms qualifications should be
Wait, you want to move 5 percent from the understanding to the firm qualifications that you were proposing?
I want to move
Maybe 35 and 45.
Now, yeah, 45 and 35, firm qualifications at 45 and understanding of project issues at 35, you know?
I don't think anybody would have any problem with that.
But at least you get, it gives you a limit.
I don't think anyone would have any different perspective on anything.
But, I mean, they're all going to say they're very qualified, they're going to have references, they're going to be down in the reference.
Yeah, well, I'm open to other team to talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I just think that, you know, you know how when we were trying to evaluate
And, right.
And other things.
And for the master plan.
Master plan, yeah.
But that was evaluating the people that were going to do the work, this is just hiring somebody of a limited number of people that will go out and prepare the RFP to talk to the people that are going to do the work. So, no, but I don't think it's a big deal one way or the other.
Let's see where the people are, and
Well, it does connect the first two criteria are pretty closely related, the firms qualifications and the firm, the understanding of the project. So I'm happy with
The 45, 35?
Happy with whatever.
How about 45, 35?
What, 42 and a half?
45, 35, it's about 30 percent and 50 percent, that's a big difference.
All right, but you're saying 45 for the firm qualifications at 35?
No, she's saying 35 for the firm qualifications.
Fine, we're just moving 5 percent above.
Moving 5 percent.
That's great, no problem.
Sounds great.
I'm fine.
All right, all right, any other comments?
I agree with that. Do we need a motion?
Because we're going to have a motion as amended, right?
So we
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Next is the resolution for the town to approve the SBWMA moving forward to issue refinancing of bonds and additional bonds to raise an additional $20 million.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a detailed staff report that was, again, mostly provided by the SBWMA. They have to model reports for each agency to adopt, that's where this report came from. But in, in basic, as the mayor stated, the SBWMA is looking to refund and refinance their long-term bond obligations, and then add to that an amount of $10 million, I believe, and then use some $5 million aside and do some improvements, 15 and then five, so $20, make some improvements. The town, as a member of the SBWMA, would have a financial obligation toward that debt based on our share, which is somewhere around 3 or so percent, plus or minus, and so the question before the town this evening is adopting this resolution, supporting the refinancing of those bonds. The SBWMA needs eight of its member agencies to do this, and I believe at this point they already have that. The county and the town are the two agencies that are kind of out there, it's a question of whether we approve it. Given our most recent item for the procurement services and the process we're going through for that, the council's options are to adopt this resolution and support the refinancing for the SBWMA, continue it into the future until, so to say, as we make a decision on what we want to do, or not adopt it this evening, and just vote it up. That's a pleasure of the council.
Any questions for George?
So I understand that whether we adopt or not makes no difference as to whether it passes? That's correct. And makes no difference to whether or not we have any liability, is that correct?
Well, actually
The fact that eight of the twelve have already approved it, as soon as the bonds are issued, then our liability
Goes up, yeah.
Whether we vote for it or not.
Correct. Yeah, my, having sat in through as both a member of the finance committee and as a member of the board, it's a smart thing to redeem the bonds. The bonds, the current bonds that are out there are, are paying 6 percent, and so, and the window for refinancing them is the next six, seven months. So we have till the end of the year to get that done. At that time, also, the staff at the SBWMA said, let's go ahead and let's get additional money so that we can go ahead and, and get the money to finance some of the capital improvements that they want. At the same time they were doing that, they also have identified the fact that they, they have what's called a grant farm, which is a corporation that helps find grants to help finance the same things that they're asking for the money for. So, so one of my questions as a member of the board was, well, if we're getting the grants, why, do we need the money? Do we need all the money that we're asking for? You know, and so, so that's a question for us. Now, my feeling is, is that if we choose to go with a different hauler, and then we don't think the JPA is really where we want to be, taking a position of we didn't approve those things and, you know, could add to aid our negotiations, I think ignoring it one way or the other is not an appropriate thing. But that's, that's my, my comments on that. But that's how this all came about. There was a window to refinance, that would save the JPA money, but they're putting more money on top of it that will actually make the cost of paying for these bonds for all residents more expensive because they're getting the capital, as opposed to getting it through tip fees, of course.
Overall, I agree.
They're going to keep the term the same.
Since the refinance, it starts in the
Well, yeah, but the term is going to be coincidental to when the old bonds were expired, so
But, you know, I have a question. You said that, and that there's a grant fund that they're looking at that might be able to get grant money to pay this. So if they grant and do the bonds with the additional money to fund the capital improvements, and then they are able to secure some grants, could not those grants go to retire some of the bond?
The bonds would be able to be retired for at least 10 years. That's written into the covenants.
Right, but it, the grant money could be used for the capital, for some capital improvements, and the bond money could then be used to smooth out some of the other obligations?
Yeah, I, I can't tell you for sure. I think that if they get a grant, they're going to have to prove that they've spent that grant money on something. Could they use the bond money for something different other than what they said, well, the projects actually were written into the covenants? And the bond, you know, there's a thick document that, you know, George and I have both been a party to, that says specifically what projects they're going to do and how much is going to be allocated for that. Could they change that? Sure, I assume that they probably can, but I'm not in, I'm not a bond marketer, I don't know, you might be able to comment on it, Mike, I don't know. Also, there is the question of, in the covenants, it said that if you, if you're in on this and you, the approving agencies guarantee that for the period until the bonds are retired, that our waste stream will go through this facility.
No matter what haul you choose.
Yeah, but, you know, Bill's, Bill's feeling, and, and, you know, Joe, although the lawyer never gave us a letter saying so, they said, oh, well, if you leave the JPA, maybe you won't you won't have to do that, but, you know, that we didn't get a letter from your attorney saying that.
My opinion is that we should be continuing this. It's because my decision may be different, I have to go through the process and I may be more in favor. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the refinancing of the bonds because it makes sense, but it really doesn't matter what I think is sort of done. So therefore, as far as the process is concerned, I'm making a decision, I'd make a more informed decision about where we are as a town after the decisions made related to the SBWMA agreement. So I think at that point I'd be more willing to really discuss this as it's pertaining to us.
Can I ask a question? Is that because you feel that you will be, you will be in a very absorption position?
No, no, because I don't think that at this point I would be saying I'm in favor of this because I'm also saying, I'm also in favor of the twenty million dollar spending upon it, which is a future item, which I may not be part of. Therefore, I shouldn't, I won't make that decision until I know where I'm gonna be.
But we will be part of it no matter what, even if we exit the JPA.
If we exit the JPA, I may not...
We're still obligated.
But I still, at that point, may not be in favor of spending more money because I'm not gonna, they're gonna issue me either way.
We're gonna issue the bonds in June.
Right.
So putting it off, I don't think makes that sense personally.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Yeah.
That's my one.
Yeah.
You're, you're, I guess you're taking value as well.
My plan is to get them, but it's not realistic.
I won.
Man, no, my, my thought is, is, I agree with Kerry, that after the twenty million dollars to make refinance, that makes total, complete sense, we should indicate support for that. I'm sorry, that's the original, not the additional twenty. After that additional twenty, I, I'd be inclined to, to oppose that for a couple of reasons, one of which is the governance is so messed up, it's just, there's something broken where other people can make a decision that binds our residents for years into the future on, on, you know, some money that we're not gonna really access.
Because we're in the JPA.
I get it, but I don't like it.
But that's just how it is.
But, so I think the only voice we have is to say, is to say vote no at this point, and it may strengthen our argument, so we maybe have a slightly stronger legal position and, and definitely kind of a stronger, uh, court.
Cracks out.
But we're in May and June is when this is...
Well, they're gonna issue it, but if we have a no vote, then we just say we, we didn't approve it. And we did, and we didn't approve it in the timeframe that you asked us to look at it and give you our approval, which is, the end of it is today.
I would concede to that position.
That does not concession, that is your position.
But it's not...
That doesn't sound good.
Take, take my position now. So we file on my account.
We haven't heard from Councilor Deisner.
Well, I have, there's one question, actually.
So I actually am the one that does have a question.
Ask the question.
That's a question.
So my understanding is this is a proposed sixty-four million dollar bond, which will be used to retire forty-four point six eight million of outstanding bonds. And then the difference will be used for new equipment purchases of about fifteen and a half million dollars for what they've defined as MRF Phase One and Phase Two. And that leaves, if my math is right, that's fifty-nine million dollars and leaves five million dollars. And then they're also proposing to fund a OZ organics to...
To, to energy.
To energy project, which would cost ten million dollars. But they only have five million left.
But they've got, they've already, they've already got the grant for that.
Oh, they have a grant to make up the difference.
Yeah.
That's not stated in that...
Well, they've been refining this, and they sent it to George, I think, a month ago. But they guaranteed at our last finance committee meeting that regardless, whatever the rate is, you know, obviously the rate fluctuates and that determines how much money we can get, they are, they have set the interest rate and, and they are going to get twenty million dollars above what it costs to retire the bonds. That is a fact. Yeah, okay. Are there any public comments from the public? So then we'll close the public comments, come back, have a discussion.
So I would agree with the comments that Mike made, I think that it makes sense to, uh, I, I actually think there's an argument to see what happens in our, our RFP process, but it sounds like by then it's gonna have been refinanced. So if I were forced to take a position today, notwithstanding that I think it makes economic sense to retire the bonds and, and to refinance them at a lower cost, I would vote against it.
Can we, um, have a question? Can we take a position that we approve the refinancing of the bonds and not approve the addition of refinancing of the...
We could tell them that.
I think that it's a vote against doing it.
Yeah, pressing vote against doing it, I would say we would support the, just refinance the existing bond. Our alternate perspective.
Right.
But we don't want to encourage that.
Yeah, because it's gonna follow us no matter what.
It's smart to retire the...
That's gonna be their position.
You guys are such lawyers.
Well, lawyers.
You're sitting in the wrong seat, that's what matters. I feel like Popeye.
Let's litigate, no.
Well, all right, so anyway, uh, can we have a resolution now?
Yeah, a motion?
A motion.
Okay, but I would agree that we oppose. Are we opposing or turning this over?
If I'm reading it correctly, you're voting to support the refinancing but not to add any additional debt.
Yeah. I think we'd oppose, I think we have to oppose the...
Oppose it first and then say...
And then say comment that we would support the, the existing refinancing without the additional debt.
Because the proposal is on, so...
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor on the proposed and seconded resolution?
Aye.
Okay, any votes no? Okay. Okay, last item, we're gonna break up into two pieces, so that Mike doesn't fade.
You do the line.
Then you can come back for Kate. You stand out for right here.
For those of you guys who aren't aware, for the record, I, I, I held this within a certain proximity, certain center project, and therefore I would do myself. From certain discussions.
Then you come back for Kate.
Come back for Kate?
Yeah, you have to. The letter says so.
Sorry.
All right, is it Marty we're gonna be...
Marty. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is your monthly civic center report, and today we're asking for two decisions from the council, and as the mayor mentioned, the one, and that's gonna be regarding the pathway, will be first, and the other one with long electric is when we'll take that second, and councilmember left, press, if you can, and have a discussion on that. So the first one getting to is a change order. We got a change order proposal from Amoroso Construction per our request, and that is to put together about six foot, and it could vary a little bit to five foot maybe, decomposed granite pathway along the fence line here, and then it would come daylight out at the temporary library of buildings up back there. This is something that the community, I think, would, especially on Ashfield, has been looking for, 'cause what we heard loud and clear is when the site was closed down, they would have no access to the park from over here. We talked to Caltrans about maybe making a safer on Al Camino, that was not very well received with any kind of help with that. So the idea was maybe to do this, where it would not interfere with construction, and I talked to the neighbor, Hushen over here, and she's very good and supports that. The one thing I do wanna add is, councilmember DeGolia brought to my attention, is that in your staff report, it says forty-six, four to six inches of decomposed granite. That was the original proposal from Amoroso, which then when we looked at it, we rejected it because we don't need to have that. So as you can see in your attachment from Amoroso, it's actually two inches of DG with four inches of recycled base rock with grid, geogrid fabric, fabric, which actually brings down the price quite a bit, is actually a better pathway for us. So we believe that'd be an opportunity for people on their bikes and pedestrians to get from Ashfield to Maple and into the park and beyond, whether riding your bikes or walking. Certainly no vehicles or anything like that would be going through that. So what we're asking council to do is authorize the city manager to approve this cost proposal estimate number one from Amoroso, and that was the amount of sixteen thousand nine, three hundred and thirty, three ninety-four, however, with about a ten percent contingency, we're asking for authority for eighteen thousand dollars for that approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions for Marty?
Marty, do you foresee situations like this coming up frequently as we go ahead?
No.
Because, you know, eighteen thousand here, eighteen thousand there, you know?
This is the only one we've heard from day one. No, I have not heard of anything else like in this area, just this. And every, the people I've talked to, and I know we have maybe one person that might wanna speak to this, that this is something that they really support and would like to see.
No, I, I think it makes a lot of sense. I just, you know, are there other unseen situations that we haven't thought of? Because when we went back to the contractors to try to get the cost down, which we did to get a good bid, you know, we said, you don't have the whole property secured, everybody was noticed about that and so, you know, unfortunately. And what about track down litigation and, you know, helping get weight funding for the residents and, you know, talk about that?
Well, Director Ovadi is actually working on a weight finding program, and you might wanna speak to that.
I have a question on the pathway.
Okay.
Okay, so anyway, so...
No, we are doing, we are doing a weight finding program.
Comment, Kerry, before your question.
No, that was a question.
No, go ahead. Would you like another question?
Yeah, I have a question.
We'll talk later.
So just to confirm, the pathway will go right along the fence?
Right.
From Ashfield out to where the temporary library is?
Yeah, and there, there's a redwood that we're gonna be going around over here, so it's not completely along the fence, but as mu, as much as possible.
Okay, and it'll be, you know, obviously between this building and the neighbor's fence.
Correct, correct.
It won't come up next to this building.
No.
But this building is gonna be seismicly retrofitted.
Correct.
And my impression was that there'd be a new foundation put down for this building?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to look into that exactly.
So my only concern there is if this building has to be raised up, I just wanna make sure that you're comfortable in terms of the safety of people walking along close to this building and, of course, if this building...
Right.
Having very substantial work done on it.
Yeah, and, and just one thing I wanna add to that, now I am comfortable and the contractor's comfortable, otherwise they would not support this, 'cause it's, for them, it's all about safety and liability. But there is actually gonna be a construction fence on this side.
Okay.
So we're gonna have the, the neighbor's fence that's there, and we're gonna screen that, and then the construction fence is actually gonna be six feet away.
So they're building a construction fence on, on this side of the pathway.
Correct, right. So you're gonna have fences on two sides, pretty much.
So you're...
Exactly, right.
Good question.
Do you have a question?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
No, my only question is...
Right now, only you, question?
Marty, my name is Seymour, I'm gonna have a question.
No, you just said that was a question, he said.
It was a question.
Are they going to add some signs to say, please stay on the pathway?
They're, they're not gonna be able to get off the pathway, it's gonna be a...
They're gonna be fenced in.
Fenced in all the way, so.
I have a question, Marty. Did you, did you look at setting up, you know, like a utility district so the people that are using it would pay for it?
No, I didn't get into that, Mary.
I don't know, it comes up all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. All right, are there any public comments? Been waiting the whole time, but it's only eight oh six.
I have two thank yous today. Christine David, resident Atherton on Ashfield Road. First of all, big thank you to the town council and the mayor for considering the walkway between Ashfield Road and Maple Lane. As Mike Lempers is learning very quickly, we've got quite an active block. On Ashfield Road, we have during the day, during school days, we have anywhere from five to eight young people going to either Meloatherton High School or Ensign Middle School on bicycles, plus you. We also have five older lady walkers who either walk together or walk alone to the park, anywhere from three to five days a week, and one does it seven days a week. We have a couple of professionals that actually live right next door that often bicycle to work, and sometimes we'll see them bicycling with their dogs beside them, so it's quite a scene, but they will be using the pathway. We also have about, I think about eighty percent of the balance of our, two sides of our street own at least a dog. So there's just a natural, if not two dogs, so there's natural use for the park and the walkway to and from the parks. So we really wanna thank you all for considering this. Secondly, we really wanna thank you for Marty. Marty has been an unbelievable conduit between this town, the project, and the neighborhood. I mean, upon introduction, he's made himself available to anyone who has any questions. He's quick to respond, he's honest and forthright with his answers, he tells them like it is, and everybody has grown to greatly appreciate and trust this man, which makes my job as a neighbor a lot easier. And I think it's gonna be just a blessing to have you and Robert moving forward on this project with the neighborhood and the town, so thank you for both.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, so we'll close public comments. I have a question though, based on the comments.
I didn't bribe her.
If there's gonna be a small pathway, it would be dangerous for people to be riding the bike on it when there's potentially pedestrians on it, so we're going to put some...
If, if we find that there's issues, we'll, we'll put some appropriate signage up.
It might be a dangerous situation.
Correct, no, we, right, I agree, yeah.
Okay, Mike, that brings up the question of signage that several residents, several council members have brought up.
If we need signage, we'll put the appropriate signage up.
And we can forward through the city manager the draft refinancing plan.
Are there any other questions on the signage? Are you okay with that? I know George had something, there's a map that you...
Yes, yeah.
Did you circulate that?
That's city in my office, prepared by Robert, addressing all of the current weight finding sign that's out and about, replacing them with some other temporary signs in the same style and everything, but at entirely different locations for the most part, because buildings are moving around. In addition to those signs, as Marty indicated, we can, based on some of the comments, a few back here, address some signage on the path itself.
Any other questions? No? Okay, can we bring in Michael?
Oh, okay. Can I take the vote?
Don't bring in Michael. Can you have, can you have a motion to...
I'll make the motion to approve the eighteen thousand dollars for the, for the residents of Ashfield to walk from, well, okay, from Ashfield to Maple.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, while we're waiting for councilmember, first, I just wanna sum up the upcoming key dates that's in your staff report. As the city manager mentioned today, the first set of trailers came in, and that was interesting how that all happened, but very successful. And next Wednesday, the other set will come in, so the set that came in today were for the permitting, building, planning, and the next few days are gonna be, be, be put up on, on blocks and then stabilized and, you know, start putting some for occupation, would be doing that.
So is the next tranche, is that going to come in at the appropriate time, or is it gonna come in a minute or a half?
Well, you know, they're coming from Livermore, and today with the weather and the traffic associated, it just took them a lot longer to get here, 'cause this, these are big things coming down the road, and I don't... They were supposed to come, as the city manager said, between six and six-thirty. I was out there waiting for them, but then, of course, that didn't happen. Next week, they're gonna be coming with the next set of three, and I'm gonna see if we can get them to come at the appropriate time. But again, you know, there's, there's situations that come up that maybe prevent that, but we'll see what we can do, you know. Also, one of the things, next Tuesday, here in these council chambers, we're gonna have a community meeting with, with everybody in this area here, and that's gonna be at five-thirty, and that's with the contractor and myself to get, let everybody know what's coming. It's gonna be a, you know, four to six-week look ahead of what things are, they're gonna be seeing and expecting to happen. And of course, everybody's welcome to that, but it's really to let everybody that's immediately in this area know what's be coming here within the next few weeks, and we hope that gets well-attended for that. Again, the move-in for admin and the building planning people is at the end of the month, with business to open on June fourth, Tuesday, June fourth, with the new trailers and the operations down there. In the week of June third is when Amoroso, and you probably already see some work going on here, tree protection plans, they're doing photographic evidence.
You're gonna make the, Mr. Lepres leave the room and change.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. So, so the rest is in your, rest is in your staff report, right. So, moving on to the other item that we would like to have council's consideration on, and that's regarding Wong Electric. They provided us with a proposal to provide all the electrical services for the temporary trailers in the park, and their proposal was for sixty-nine thousand two eighty-five, and Wong Electric's the ones that did the work at the temporary trailers over here. And as it said in your staff report, that work was thirty-four thousand one seventy-five. However, the park has much more challenges with trees, and there are six trailers, not four, and there are just many other issues there with the electrical services that was needed to be brought in to provide the power for the trailers there versus over here. They would just drop a line from Maple into the building, so it was a lot simpler progress. So we would like to have council's approval to authorize the city manager to approve this agreement with Wong Electric to do that work necessary for the electrical service at the park, the temporary trailers. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Again, we forgot to mention, but it's in your staff report, this is what it costs, that's also part of or contemplated, and it costs a lot of.
Right.
How would you like it with that?
I think this one's a little higher than we thought it was gonna be, but it's.
Yeah.
I have another question. So once all this electricity is brought in for temporary trailers, could there, would there be any future use for it? I mean, is there?
Future use for the equipment?
No, for the electricity, the, all the electrical conduits and things that we're bringing in for the trailers.
I'm not sure about that.
Would just have to be ripped out?
Let me ask a question in a different way. Is the power that's going to be provided to the trailers coming from the PG&E lines?
Correct. Yeah, they have to upsize their transformer, and we have actually three poles, so it's overhead through the trees and coming down to the trailers, and.
So that would make sense to me, that if we're bringing that, that additional power into the park, there may be a use for that power in the future.
It could be. I have not looked into that.
Don't we have plans to put in, charge, electrical car charging stations in the park?
We really should, yes.
Wouldn't it possibly work with that?
It possibly could, yeah. I haven't, I myself have not looked into that, Councilmember. I think there's a lot of opportunities once these trailers are taken out.
So it's too bad that Dick Moore, I don't know if all of you remember Dick Moore, Richard Moore, who had once been a chief of police as well as, well, he did, but he also lived across the street on Watkins at Burns, but when they needed some electricity to the park, he and I think Phil Lively went out and just, you know, jerry-rigged some, and gone with it and brought it over. I think it was to borrow the main house for a little bit, but that was a, I know, that was a different day and time, don't you think?
So Marty really has some getup, you know, job.
Marty, come on!
Sorry.
I'm, I'm.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just, before we were on this subject, I believe these are drop lines, we're not trenching lines, so it won't impact charging stations, because it'd be a lot more expensive to trench.
Right.
Okay, so just so, and we don't get confused, that this is an easy fix to do, charging station, actually would change the whole bid structure, because they'd have to trench.
Yeah, we're, we're not trenching because there's the tree issues, and it'd actually be much more expensive.
Yeah, we can't, we can't.
So this is really temporary power.
Yeah, but once you're up, excuse me, once, once you're upgrading, you know, the power source, then.
Absolutely, at the street, at the, there, that, that actually would be helpful in future uses that the park might have, but as Councilmember Ruiz said, is, it's overhead temporary power coming to the trailers, but everything that PG&E's doing at the street and our contractor, that'll stay there.
Okay.
So, so the question I have is, on the proposal from Wong Electric, they're deciding that says provide power for home furnishings generally.
Right.
What does that mean?
We're gonna have a backup, a emergency generator as part of that, for an EOC, a temporary, potential EOC for.
We have no EOC in this.
The EOC is going to be the pavilion, right?
We, we talked about putting it in the pavilion, but re-upgrading the power at the pavilion was gonna be too expensive, so using the trailers on a temporary basis made more sense.
And we're gonna be leasing a generator for that, right.
Any other questions? Any public comments? Public comments, final comments. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I would just say, I'll make a comment to Harry's prior comment, which is certainly charging stations would require trenching, but once we remove the trailers and we do the work that we're contemplating to do in the front of the park, there's gonna be a lot of trenching.
We could even bring this back on a new agenda.
That'd be a good idea.
Talk about, you gave charging stations and the.
Okay, do we have a motion on approval of?
Second.
Or in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any closing public comments? Seeing none? Okay.
Let's eat cake.
I mentioned this up earlier, I'd love to get a update on, it's, in the city manager report, SB fifty, we're expecting, I think, a number of.
Oh, yeah, we all got. Asking what we're going to do to stop it.
And we have, at your Gold meeting on May twenty-eighth, you have the opportunity to talk about future housing issues, including affordable housing, SB fifty, and that, stuff like that. It's not a staff report, but it's an opportunity for council feedback. There was a hearing on May fifteenth with Senator Hill, and you called for that, I don't know what the outcome of that hearing was, but I'll do some research and get back to you.
And Elizabeth and I went to a meeting last Friday with Assemblymen Burman on RVs and the different programs to temporarily support people that are in RVs and then, and then move them on to more permanent structures, which I thought was a, there's a lot going on in that area, and it's not just Palo Alto, Mountain View was just absolutely chopper block with RVs and stuff like that.
Well, the City of Mountain View and the City of East Palo Alto are creating RVs overnight safe zones, and they're working with the faith-based communities, and they're working with other professional caregivers who understand how to work through these issues with the homeless and with the people in RVs. But one of the biggest users are construction workers who are coming in and parking on the streets and working in the area during the week and living on the streets during the week, and then going back to Mantica or Livermore or something like that. So that, if they could figure out a, a safe place to get those RVs off of the streets and into a parking area and maybe charge a fee, you know. And the other thing, that's a huge, huge issue, is the health and safety, because they're dumping on the sidewalks and, you know, it's, yeah, yeah, so it's a really big problem.
So a further comment on SB fifty, I'm just looking up the legislative action page. It was set for hearing on the thirteenth, it was placed in suspense on the thirteenth, and then it was reset for the hearing on the sixteenth, so it's tomorrow. So if you haven't had a chance to call Senator, please do so.
Does Senator Burman give any information?
No. You know, he, he, in January, in January, he brought up the CASA initiative, and, you know, I think he's more in favor of it than not, but the majority of people in the, in the audience at that time, and I think even in this past meeting, was that people are still saying, look, give us local control, you know? You can't, you can't take away our revenue sources, you can't dictate how our communities are gonna be, you don't understand what those are, and so.
And the impacts on infrastructure, if you require all of this, you know, building throughout a, a town, not just Atherton, but, I mean, you have this massive amount of new housing without helping those cities and jurisdictions pay for the infrastructure, like schools and sewers and, you know, other services. So this is, can I? So this is, we're gonna have cake. This is the last meeting of the city council in this chambers. Next meeting in June, our study session, and our next further scheduled council meeting will be at the park in our, in, in the Jennings Pavilion.
You want to announce?
We have cake!
Okay, motion to adjourn. Thank you.